So I will call this meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen here in Millville, Massachusetts at 7:00 PM, excuse me, on June 7th, 2022, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and so moving through the agenda, we won't be going into executive session. We will be conducting the meeting in open session. Um, okay, so just let me get some other notes ready. I'm sorry, I was goofing around over here. Okay, um, so we're here to discuss the actions of someone who was at a recent Board of Selectmen's meeting. It was on May 16th, and the behavior happened at 27:44. We're gonna have a roll the tape moment, so I don't know if everyone can see this. Being here, Jackie, talking about the stabilization accounts at the special town meeting. This was not discussed, we were past the annual town meeting discussion. And there we go. There it is.
There he is.
Yep, so there we.
There he is.
Okay. Hello?
Hey, Jerry.
So we just started in open session, Jerry?
Okay.
Okay, so we just rolled the tape and showed at 27:44, um, someone flipping the bird, who was Mr. Finn, and then mouthing "shut the bleep up" to the attendance. So, um, for me, we did get a letter on May 23rd, which I received on the 24th, I believe. It was nine days after the incident. Um, and I was gonna read the letter unless there are any objections.
No, please do.
Dear Jen, please accept my sincerest apologies for my unintended and unbecoming conduct at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. The demonstration of my frustration was beyond the pale of my 32 years' past character experiences. I have always viewed all meetings using the lens of being fully prepared, competent on the given subject, and consistent of the mission of what is the benefit to my town. For the record, my unintended home-kitchen-based outburst was never intended to be divulged or directed at the public or any specific individual, but did demonstrate my naive technical skills. My out-of-bounds frustration was focused on the lack of participation by our registered voters as 95% of our citizenry did not bother to attend our annual meeting. And we needed to pass on five articles. My tipping point occurred when references were made as to it being a great meeting, technically yes, and how quick the meeting was completed. Looking back over 32 years of working for the benefit of my town and without any other issues noted, and with my apology for misjudgment, I ask, who of you have not made a mistake? And in retrospect, wish that you could unring the bell. I cannot either. None of us in the public service eye should ever forget the higher standard we are all held to and the respectful way all of us would like to be treated, a lesson I will not soon forget. In quotes, "The quality of mercy is not strained but is a blessing to those who provide and those who receive." I would ask that you please consider my entire body of work and not one outburst of frustrated emotion. List of consistent town involvement. So, and there's, um, I'll show everyone, there's two a page and more of, of, yes, I was 29 different things. I did count them. Um, so then, in closing, if after reviewing my apology and my explanation, the above body of work, you still feel that further action is merited and beneficial to the town, then please use this letter as my offer of resignation from the Millville Capital Planning Committee, effective immediately. Thank you for your balanced consideration. Signed, Jerry Finn. So, um, for me, I had a few thoughts. I'm happy to go first unless someone, okay. So first, um, the point was made that we were talking about a successful meeting at the town. Um, and I thought, why focus on the negative because we did have such a positive town meeting? We had a budget surplus, which we haven't had in many, many years. Um, the meeting did finish in an hour. We had to pass in a few articles, but luckily, we were able to get a quorum last night and rectify that situation, you know, just three weeks later, four weeks later. So, I, you know, if you're gonna focus on the negative, I just didn't like that. Um, second is, it was discussed that this was because this was frustration due to the annual town meeting. We actually switched topics from the 7:50 moment, um, within the discussion. So, we talked about the annual town meeting until almost eight minutes into the meeting, and this action happened at 27:44, which is 19 minutes and 56 seconds after that discussion. We were well into the special town meeting discussion. Um, and the last thing for me, and this is really kind of what's, the issue for me is, this is where the bar is in Millville now. You can be in elected position, shoot the bird, say "shut the bleep up," and keep your position as an elected official. And I think now if someone were to come into the town hall and the town clerk were to do this, is that just allowed? Is the administrative assistant just allowed to do this now too? That's really, for me, kind of the nail in the coffin, is that, like, is Andrew allowed to shoot me the bird right now and he just has no consequences? I know Andrew would never do that, but like, that's just where we are in Millville. That's what you can do. So, my opinion is that there should be no, um, positions held in Millville with someone who exhibits this kind of behavior. So that's my opinion. Andrew or Richard?
Well, I had to review that tape actually a few times because I, I was rather confused, much like you pointed out earlier, where that reaction took place and, um, and the relevancy of the topic being discussed, so, um, thank you for kind of clarifying that. I, um, I wasn't quite sure what brought that on. I honestly, I think I watched it about six, seven times, um, just to try and get a grasp on where his frustration lied, and, um, and I appreciate the letter, uh, of apology and kind of clarifying that. I agree with you, I don't think that, um, that behavior is acceptable for anybody, uh, being representative of the town or anybody, uh, that's a, that's a resident here. I personally, um, I've been here about 10 years, and, um, although been relatively quiet, I, I try to treat everybody and neighbors with respect and, um, you know, and I try not to demonstrate that behavior, and nonetheless, you know, in a forum like this, I certainly could never imagine doing that in a public setting. So, it, it is concerning, um, but in retrospect, I do understand the frustration and, um, uh, and I know that, uh, the voter turnout here has been, uh, a little low and, and we are missing a few seats here, um, for the Board of Selectmen, so I, I do kind of see two sides to this. Probably not the best, uh, best way to voice, uh, opinion, but, um, it's kind of where we are today, so, um, I don't agree with it. Andrew, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I guess I'd just echo what, um, the Chairwoman, her statements are on it, and it's, yeah, I don't understand the reasoning behind or the motivation for it, but that's, so.
Of course you can, absolutely.
Jerry Finn, 47 Grove Street, I guess that's the official. Um, I just want to say, first of all, I want to apologize to all the people of Millville, and that's why I took, uh, this opportunity to come back from Tennessee to make sure I made it here. Um, I, the thing that was most frustrating to me, um, was the fact that we had, um, you know, if you invite 100 people to your birthday party and only five people show up, um, I can't see that as being successful. Sorry, that's just the way I feel about it. I sent out 50 letters to people, I went up and down the street, talked to people about coming to the meeting, uh, I told them the importance of this budget and all the things we were gonna discuss had to be, uh, brought forward. Um, I'm not making excuses for what I did. I can only tell you that, being almost 70 years old in August, uh, I'm not technically, as you well know, I'm not technically understanding of things. Uh, I was first told the meeting was gonna be live here, um, at 5:27, uh, I got a message from Peter saying that here is the Zoom, that being on it, which surprised me. Both Patty and I, Patty is a lot more technical than I am, but not very, very technical. Uh, I'm not technical at all. I had, um, thought that the meeting would start off where we could get into the subject. Instead, um, there was the executive session that took place first. So we had roughly, what, an hour and 22 minutes of where we basically sat at the kitchen table, waiting for our opportunity to speak on this particular issue and the issue of, um, I think it was the, um, the COPHORT that was gonna be discussed as well, as well as the opportunity for the, um, for BVT to be able to help the kids. Uh, that was the issues I was there for. Um, I was ready to go, we had ourselves wired in, got it ready to go, and then we were told that we were gonna have to wait for the executive session, which, okay. So we waited and waited, and, uh, again, by the time it got around to it, I was starting to get a little frustrated, because, um, being an impetuous person, I wanted to be able to get this resolved on the COPHORT, which is something that we've all talked about, uh, something that, uh, started, uh, basically about a month and a half ago. Um, also, uh, when it came to the BVT, that was a February issue that was first brought up to Peter's attention on February 12th, I believe was the date. When we brought that subject up, uh, there was some consternation as to, we need to know who else is doing it. I went to the, uh, subject matter, uh, as I always do, I got everything I asked, that was asked of me, I was able to supply, and, um, the frustration was that this meeting seemed to be going in a direction, um, that seemed to prolong the situation. And Jen, that's not your fault, not my, it's my fault, because I mistook that as being, they're pushing this to the very end, and I felt as if that that was disingenuous to a situation in which this was a top priority, with me at least, to try to get something for the kids' BVT, uh, as well as to try to get, um, the COPHORT for the seniors. So, those, those are my rationales behind it. Um, I looked at a number of different ways that I could have approached it better. Um, like I said, um, when you pass on five articles, that's not exactly a successful meeting, in my interpretation. I'm sorry if people say differently, I did not. We have been waiting for the, um, cash reserves to actually show itself forward, to see what we had, uh, it's been a couple of years. Now, that's frustration. Um, when you send out 50 letters to people, uh, you walk up and down the street, you knock on doors, and you ask people to show up and they don't, that's frustration. Um, when the meeting is qualified as being a good meeting, um, I didn't see it that way. Plus, I felt as if the hour and almost a half that we were waiting to get on that, and also I was kicked off, um, the, uh, I was kicked off the, uh, Zoom because it just, we lost it, and then I was panicking trying to get back on. Like I said, I'm not technically able to understand all that. We had it, so it was muted. It was in a point where I had, if I could use this expression, I ended up getting up and I was going to the bathroom, and when I heard the conversation going on with it, um, I said to myself, oh, you gotta be kidding me. Unfortunately, I used a different choice of words and a different way of presenting it. For that, I'm sincerely apologetic. Uh, there was no delay in my naughtiness, Peter, I think you attested this as well. When you looked at the situation, I wasn't around when this took place. I was out, um, with some buddies, we were up in, um, fishing, as a matter of fact, and we had, we had no internet. So I wasn't able to respond to you, Peter. Uh, however, I did respond to you, I think, five different times, according to my count, uh, once I found out that you were looking for me. And that was, uh, I left on a Tuesday, the meeting was on a Monday, I got back on a Saturday night late, I called you immediately on, or you called me Sat- Sunday morning. At that point in time, I was able to take a look at it and said, what happened here? And my wife said, you might have been muted, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't be seen. That I am sincerely apologetic for. I did not realize that. I thought with a little line through it, because of my naivety, uh, I looked at it and said, oh, I'm, I'm good, and I just felt that I needed to, um, let people know that that was not intended for any specific person or any specific thing, but I apologized for it, and I recognized the fact that it was wrong. I don't have a problem with that. It was in the sanctity of my own kitchen, I had my wife with me, and I thought we were off air, and I'm at my own house, and I'm sure that some of us at some point in time have said things that they're not really happy about, um, and I did that, and I can't unring that bell. Um, the letter that you wrote is exactly the way I feel about it. Uh, I have 32 years for this, for this, um, town, and within that timeframe, um, we're talking multiple chairmanships, multiple, uh, opportunities to look at, um, ways of which to help the town. Probably about $1.6 million worth of grants that have been pushed through with, with my help. Uh, and that's important, that when you start to look at the whole history of things, when you look at somebody who has a past record of, jeez, he's done this, you know, this is the fourth or fifth time someone's done it, I didn't do that. There was no indication that within 32 years that something like that has happened. Was it a wrong thing to do? Yes! Otherwise, I wouldn't have sent each one of you individually a letter apologizing. And tonight, I wanted to come here, under some duress, to get here to tell the people in Millville, I'm sorry for what happened, but my technical skills are not there, I thought we were off air. Was it the right thing to do in the sanctity of my own kitchen? Yeah, I guess you could say that. I did not realize we were still on air. That is apologetic, as I can be on it, I don't know any other way to do it, except to tell you that, again, I'm sincerely apologetic for it. Um, and by the time we get back onto the, uh, internet, I asked him, and I'm sure he'll verify the same fact, uh, I asked him, I said, are we gonna know when you folks are done with the executive session? And then I went to the Robert's Rules and I looked at some of those things, and executive sessions traditionally, not, not always, but traditionally, an executive session's come at the end of meetings, as they have for many years here. So I was thinking that someone positioned it in such a way that it would drag this thing out to the very end, and I was concerned about that, because I thought it was an issue that needed to be brought forward and done in a quick step. Again, I apologize, I don't know what else to tell you, except, uh, it was, uh, something that I'm not gonna forget, um, and I'm gonna be a lot more careful whenever I use Zoom meetings, because I'm not familiar with them. You folks, you're much younger than I, like I said, I'm gonna be 70 come August, I'm not used to Zoom meetings and all that, and I was hoping we were gonna have a meeting here so we could discuss this in, in live, but, uh, Jen, I guess you had a, a situation with COVID at the time. I didn't even get that message till like 5:22, I think was the exact time that Peter sent it to me. I didn't know about it. Now, you may have put it on in the, uh, the thing ahead of time, I said, I, I don't go on that internet all the time with that, I just don't. Um, so those are the only things I can, it was totally unintended, was not something that I wanted to do, it was not something that was preconceived on my part, I'm gonna do this when it comes, it, it was just an outburst, immature outburst, absolutely, something I regret, absolutely, and I apologize for doing it, absolutely, but I, I can't unring the bell. Um, I did say to you folks, please consider my record, there has been no other history, consider my record for what we've done, for what we've tried to do here for this town. Um, and there's nothing in the, in that 32 years that says anything about, um, any type of behavior like that, that I'm aware of, that anybody can mention. So it was a total outburst, probably, uh, something that now, when I look back at it, I just wish to heck I hadn't realized that it was only on no voice, I didn't realize it was still on the screen. So, uh, that's my, my problem for doing that, and I apologize to everybody for it. I want to make sure each one of you got a separate letter, which I think you all received from me, concerning Saint. Uh, I don't know what else I can tell you. Uh, it is what it is, I can't stop it. Uh, I did say that if you folks feel compelled, that after looking at a 32-year record and the things that have been accomplished with that, to try to help out the town, if you feel compelled to go ahead and say, that doesn't matter, what only matters is an outburst that you did because you didn't know what was going on with the computer on a Zoom meeting that you didn't expect, then I said I would offer my resignation, which I will offer to you, because I do not, and I do not want to think that anybody has a right to do that. That is something that you cannot do to break the trust, but I did. Only, I didn't realize it in the sanctity of my own kitchen. So I apologize for it again, and I don't know what else I can tell you. Um, and I just hope you would consider that, as you consider the remedy on this, if the remedy is that you feel it doesn't really matter, you know, it's something we can't have go on, and I agree with that, I, I think my letter pretty much states that, um, then that's fine. I don't have an issue with it, uh, I don't think that, uh, I deserve to be on that committee, uh, under Peter's, uh, command, to be on that committee if you believe that everything else that has been taking place here has less meaning than what it would be for an outburst of someone that's just totally naive about how computers work, Zoom meetings, and that's it. I'm not familiar with those things, as you well know, I'm not very good at it. So, that's all I wish to say on it. Um, I hope that gives you some explanation on it. It was not focused to any one particular person, it was just a, a blurt-out that I had, and I apologize for it. And I don't know what else I can tell you, I hope you would at least consider that when you, uh, consider the resignation as part of follow the process with it, if that's the case, so be it. Um, and I'm willing to take that as a, as a consequence of it, um, although I think that I do add benefit to it. Uh, if you feel that there is no benefit to it, then do what you need to do.
I have a comment and a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, the comment, so we did take the agenda in order, and we had to do the executive session first because of 9C on the agenda, which we did publicly, and so that's the reason why it was first. And we don't typically have it first, we have done it a couple of times, because we need to have a conversation with ourselves before we go into the agenda and keep it public, and I don't wanna delay something, or we, it's not just my decision, everyone gets to input the agenda, so we don't wanna delay a discussion, so that's what happened there. And I guess, so my question is kind of like what I was, like, when I spoke about the bar, so say, Peter or another elected person gives the finger and says, shut the F up, and what should, like, are we just allowed to, I don't know what to do. Like, and I was thinking about a lot of other things, if someone said, if someone were to say, well, Jerry, you got to do this, and he get to keep all his positions, then what I would say to them, and I've been trying to think of a lot of creative things, to be honest, like, could you forfeit your stipend forever? Could you do community service? Could you be here two days a week? Like, I was trying to think of a lot of creative things where I could say, you know, he did do this, but he also did this too, so that's why we didn't recommend that he resigns his position on the capital planning and BVT, because he did this. And I can't think of what the "this" is, and I've been, I really been thinking about a lot of creative things, and I just, I don't know what the "this" is. Do you, do you know what the "this" is?
I don't understand your question.
So someone, so let's say someone came in the, the thing tomorrow.
Are you saying hypothetical here, that someone comes in and does that?
Yeah.
I don't think that that has the same mercurious value of what it is when you're in your own kitchen, you thought the thing was shut off. I mean, if someone walks in this door and does that right now, they ought to be ushered right out of here and thrown out of the meeting, I don't have a question with that. That is an absolute for anybody to do something like that. That is a, that is a hypothetical you're putting in. So you're taking a real situation of a person who is not understanding what is taking place on that Zoom meeting, obviously, and at the same timeframe trying to now take a hypothetical, someone walking in here, like, uh, the clerk and giving everybody the finger. I, I don't see how those things marry. I just don't understand the, I can't understand how you could look those two things in the eye and say, well, that's gonna be the same thing. It's not.
Other people are gonna say it's the same thing.
Well, I, I'm more concerned about, I'm more concerned about what you people are thinking right now.
I think it's the same thing.
Well, I, I, explain why then. So someone walks in here and does that, and has no recompense whatsoever, just comes in and says it, for, for really no reason, well, how does that have the same merit as something where your frustration level and the things that I've mentioned to you were one of the causes for what I had done?
Because you were still in the meeting, this was still a Board of Selectmen meeting.
That's, that's the critical point, that that's the difference. If people walk in here and we're having a meeting and you do that, person recognizes, is, is totally, totally understanding of the fact that coming into a meeting and doing that. I wasn't. I had no idea. I thought that that was, I'm in my kitchen, like I said, I was in the bathroom, I stopped, I turned on, saw, you got it, and I did what I did. I'm not gonna say I didn't do it, because I did, you can see it, I mean, it's pretty simple.
You couldn't deny it, the video evidence is.
Well, no, I, I, and I don't think I ever did.
Yeah, no, you didn't, no.
I did not deny any of it, and I, matter of fact, uh, as far as any time length went, um, the time length on that thing, uh, I think it was about 28 hours after I understood what was going on. I first got told by, um, was it Sam Smith or Paul Bonio, or someone called me, and said that, you know, do you realize what you did here? And I did not have any service where I was, I was up in Lake Michigan, out in the middle of the lake, I had no ser- I had no idea what they were talking about. I had no understanding until this gentleman over here called me on that Sunday morning when I got home Saturday night at about 10:00, and I just said, what are we all talking about? That's when I started to say, I better look at this thing four or five times. And then I looked at it and I said, oh my God.
So I wanna add something, um, so, so I wear many hats, and this kind of comes up too, and, you know, I'm at different levels of the government, and when we do Zoom meetings, and I think we can agree that Zoom meetings are not gonna go away, um, in the foreseeable future, you know, with fuel prices, the pandemic, the one thing that we've learned, that I've learned in the hats that I wear, is that Zoom meeting is an extension of whatever body of government that you're operating under and represent, whatever is displayed in your house, whatever you have behind you, whatever's going on, whatever you, you know, verbalize, i- is an extension of that meeting. And, you know, lately, I think we've seen some of it in the news, you see broadcasters, um, you know, doing inappropriate things in, in meetings, such like that, and there's been disciplinary actions and termination, so, um, this is kind of a learning curve for folks that are not accustomed to Zoom, and so I, I understand your frustration, but it's not really an excuse, because it is kind of.
I'm not, I'm not trying to make it an excuse.
And I, so I think what, to Jen's point, what she's asking here is, um, this is relatively you, this is something that the Board hasn't dealt with, and so I think she's being, um, candid with you, what is it that you, um, if you were in our shoes, um, would see as an acceptable form of, um, I guess, making the taut hole for, for wronging them, for, for conducting yourself in this manner?
Again, I think the letter spells it out, the end of it, um, that says that I will gladly go, and if I need to, if you folks deem it necessary after 32 years of service, if you think it's necessary that I should resign from that, I have no issue with that. I think it's a punishment that fits the crime. If you look at what the, the definition or the platitudes are on crime, you, you look at it relative to, what is the propensity of this person that has done this on a regular basis? I don't think there's any cause that you can see there in that. The, the crime that was, if you wanna call it a crime, the misnomer that took place on that thing, um, I believe, indeed, uh, shouldn't have, uh, consequences to it, and I'm willing to take those consequences, that's why I offered that resignation.
So I, I think, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Jen, but I, I think what she was asking you was kind of something in between that, she recognizes your years of service, but she was kind of asking you, rather being a black-and-white situation, where would you fit in that grayscale? What, what could you do to, to make this, uh, to correct the situation without leaving the bar where it is? She's, she's not formally asking you to resign right this second.
Right, I'm asking, like, I'm wondering, I, I've been trying to think of other things, sure, of resignation, and I can't. So what is your, do you have any ideas? Like, I thought, like, like forfeiting your stipend, being here for, um, being here for a day a week for our community service, something like that, like, whatever it is.
I think, I, I, whatever you deem is the right thing, Jen, is all, what it's gonna end up being, because I don't know, if you're in the Board, feel strongly that there's some penalty that needs to be paid beyond a resignation on, um, the CPC, Capital Planning, then that's your prerogative to do that. I'm offering it as a, as a way to say, I am sorry for what took place, and I like, I like some of the ways that you're mentioning things, I wasn't aware of some of those things that was behind you and everything else. I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. I mean, hell, I wasn't even aware the thing was on, so how could I be aware what's behind me? Um, that's just my, being naive on it, Jen. I, I just felt as if that, that one miscalculation of not understanding it, because perhaps I'm not used to it, uh, like I said, gonna go on 70, I'm not used to this on a regular basis like you guys are. Um, I thought it was off. Um, if I felt like I wanted to say something like that in the confines of my own home, so be it. No one ever know the damn difference. Thing that comes down to it here is, I miscalculated, I did not realize that that was our way. Uh, it was the small box, it wasn't on the full screen, uh, it was something that I demonstrated as an immature act, I don't have a problem with that. And I'm here apologizing to the town, which I felt I owed them that responsibility to say, I apologize to everybody in town for it, if they took exception to it, uh, even though there was quite a few, uh, opportunities to, to use that as a, as a, you know, let's, let's put his, uh, reputation up there again and see if we can show what kind of a mean guy is. I'm not a mean guy, if you guys really know me over 32 years, I don't believe that's the way I am. And I have no issue, uh, again, looking at what it is, uh, I've offered that resignation, if you determine that that's the, that merits it, fine. If you determine that there's something else that should be on that, fine, I mean, it's whatever you wanna determine what it is. I thought that this was a, a good compromise, that would, would say to you, I'm sorry for this, apologize, letters, tell the town that I apologize, and at the same timeframe, come here in front of you folks and say, this is the reasons why I was doing this. Okay? So it seemed like it came out of nowhere, I think is the way you recognized it, Richard, and I think that you did as well. It did come out of nowhere. Um, it was an unintended burst in my kitchen, not realizing that that, that that thing was working, but I again ask you to take a look at the entire record and say, yeah, jeez, he has a history of this, he does it all the time. No, I don't.
No, I don't.
I, I think it's recognized, that I don't. I think it's also recognized, I hope you recognize, and I think Peter, you would go along with this as well. I think it's also recognized, I hope you recognize, and I think Peter, you would go along with this as well, that anytime I've come to a meeting, I come prepared. Is that fair? Anytime I come to a meeting, I've done my homework?
Yeah, I don't.
Anytime I've gone anywhere, I've tried to do the best I can, I made a mistake. Okay? Something that I was not aware I even made until Peter told me about it. Then I had a look at it. For that, I, again, I'm sorry for doing that. It's just my being naive at what a Zoom meeting curtails. I didn't even realize the stuff behind you as well. So that's the best I can tell you. You, you may do what you wish.
So if, if I could, because Jerry, you know, referred to me. And I do appreciate the fact that you're here this evening. I mean, that, that takes a certain amount of guts, okay? And you were also officially, you know, I think with the, when you and I spoke, it was after I'd sent you a couple of emails and you were away, which explains why you couldn't respond.
Correct.
And we did have a good conversation that Sunday morning.
We did.
I spoke to you.
I thought you told me.
It was Saturday or Sunday. I don't.
It was Sunday. I didn't get home till Saturday night. So it was a Sunday morning.
Sunday morning.
The letters went to you folks right after I had a chance to review the tape two or three times and after Peter and I had talked.
Yeah, so when we talked, just if I could, you know, I said I was speaking to you as your friend, as the CPC chair and as the town administrator. As your friend, I'd say, you, you got to get an apology out real quick. And, and that was a good apology that you did say. And nobody disputes your lengthy service to the town. As the CPC chair, I did ask for your resignation.
Yes, you did.
You didn't want to do that at that point. You have offered it here in your letter and technically it's been accepted by the moderator, who's the appointing authority. So we have that officially on the record. The meeting itself was posted on May 12th as a Zoom meeting. I don't always get the Zoom link from my favorite guy behind the wall there until late in the day. So that's why you, you know, you were on the agenda later in the agenda for the fusion laser and for the carport and so forth. And so, yes, it was a long night for everybody involved to get to that point. I don't know of anybody that appreciated the, the gesture that was made, when it was made. It was only after the fact, the next day or so that we, we learned about that. But here, here's the thing. If you take it at face value, yes, we've been, you've been in a bunch of Zoom meetings on the Capitol Committee. We've all been in Zoom meetings. We know they're extensions of exactly what we're doing here. They're to stand in for what we exactly do here. And so we're all, there are consequences to our actions. And if you take the actions at face value, you know, it appeared to me, you know, I appreciate how you've explained what happened in your kitchen. But what happened in the meeting was you gave a gesture and mouth obscenities at all the people in that room, including, you know, one or more people in the cheap seats here this evening, right? And so I take it as, gee whiz, that guy just gave me the finger and told me where to go or what to do with myself, right? And so where I get to on that is you don't have to necessarily respect me or like me or anything as a person, but you got to respect the role I play. And you got to respect the roles each one of these individuals play who are elected officials, technically elected officials or people of authority, granted that authority by virtue of these elected officials. So that's the challenge. And we have to set, you know, a level of expectation for participation that I think is really what's eating at Jen here and, and the board. Because, you know, it's just not a tolerable thing, regardless of the mistake. I make mistakes, you know, people make mistakes, they get arrested, right? People make mistakes. It's a, you can't take it back. It happened. But gee whiz, we, there's no free rein to let that happen again in the town of Millville. Boy, that's for sure. So I don't know. That's enough that I would have to say on the matter.
Well, I.
Can I speak as well?
Sure.
Yep, I was just, I got a letter. I'm the appointing official for Capitol Committee. So I just kind of wanted to, I had prepared a statement that I wanted to read as well. So the behavior displayed by Mr. Finn at the Board of Selectmen meeting on May 16th, in my opinion, was very unbecoming of any public official. As an elected or appointed official, we should all be holding ourselves to the higher standard of conduct and putting respect and civility at the forefront of all we do, both on camera and off. No matter our position on any matter of a topic that we are passionate about, we must remain polite and cordial to each other at all times. We are elected to be representative pillars of this community and to do what we think is best for this town and its residents. Disrespect, crude behaviors, comments, gestures, or other obscenities cannot be tolerated and have no place in our meetings or in our community at large. As the appointing authority to the Capitol Planning Committee, I have taken action to rescind Mr. Finn's appointment on that committee effective May 24th upon receipt of his letter in conjunction with the town administrator, Board of Selectmen Chair, and Town Council. He was notified as such via email.
Yep.
I ask that the Board of Selectmen also take these inexcusable and reprehensible actions into consideration tonight and determine what further consequences are within their jurisdiction as a statement to all the residents in this town that this type of behavior is not tolerable. As a community, we must hold our officials accountable for their actions. We must strive to set a good example in all that we do. And finally, I'm taking a little bit of personal, not a little bit, I'm taking personal objection to the continued classification of our ATM as a failure. Having been part of meetings in this town for over 18 years, I cannot think of a time when town meetings have been run better than under the current leadership. If you, Mr. Finn, or anyone else in this room or watching feels that there is room for improvement in any of our meetings, I am sincerely open to and would absolutely encourage constructive feedback as what we can do to make them better. This is our town. I intend to do the absolute best I can to incorporate any suggestions of how I can do it better for you. I am elected to serve this community and will do so with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. I think she pretty much summed that up correctly. And I, I applaud her putting it in such good terms that people can understand. Again, I am not suggesting that I did this with an intention. However, indeed, I, I was able, I left the mic open if you want to look at it that way. I did not realize it. So I'm, again, I'm sorry for doing that. I don't have any way of looking at this other than to say that a person who has dedicated themselves to helping this town out, I think is something that you have to consider here. I don't think you can look at something and just say, well, that one time event is something that characterizes it. Do I believe that the person who is either appointed nor, or elected should be held to a high standard? Absolutely. I think for 32 years I have been. I had one lapse of opportunity here that I shouldn't have done, and I did. And I don't know what else to say to you, except that's, that's the way that I can tell, explain it to the people here. So, and I don't disagree with anything Jackie says. As a matter of fact, if you saw that note that I read to you folks there, I said that the meeting in terms of its, of its, the way it was held was appropriate. Matter of fact, not only appropriate, was pretty much the way that she does everything in, in a very professional manner. So that was, that was clearly spelled out there, that that wasn't the reason I was frustrated. And it's not a frustration that resulted from that. It was a frustration that resulted from the way I thought the meeting was being handled in terms of us being downstream as far as what the, what the two, uh, two options of which I was asked to be at that meeting was to be there for. So.
Okay, so does anyone else have anything for Jerry? Or I thought that we could move to public forum? I do have some guidelines from Town Council, but do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I have, thanks. So one thing I would like to object to is that you're saying that kept to a higher standard. That's, your actions aren't even just a higher standard. It's just a bare minimum. Okay? That's what it comes down to. For a person to be acting in public, that's a bare minimum requirement. It's not being kept up to a higher standard.
Saying that 32 years was being held to a high standard. For 32 years I was held to a high standard. There was no outbursts or anything like that that took place.
But you're implying that your statement, that we're all always kept to a higher standard and that your actions are.
They need to be held to a higher standard. And I think I needed to be held.
But it's the fact that you broached even a simple standard of common decency. That's the big thing. And you are avoiding it.
I don't disagree with you.
First off, that's my comment. That's not a question. Next, when did you receive the agenda for that meeting from May 16th?
According to what Peter said, I don't know when exactly I did, I got it. I think you said May 12th. It was first posted. It was posted May 12th and it was posted, and I understood it to be a live meeting.
Okay. So you were surprised that you were put at the end of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting? Why? If you had seen the agenda?
Well, I wasn't surprised. I thought that this.
But you were saying that you were upset that you were put towards the end of the meeting earlier, just not now.
I, 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 when I, when I first heard of this, it was going to be a, a meeting that was going to be an open meeting here.
The order was the same though.
The order was the same as it was. Then I heard the thing got switched to having a Zoom meeting. When that got switched as a Zoom meeting, if you look at the, the way this went down, it was normally you would have an executive session at the end of the meetings, which is the way you've normally done it. This one here, for some reason, decided, it all of a sudden went from a, from a regular meeting with it being at the end.
Yes, but the agenda that you probably had viewed before the meeting was clearly not changed or was posted well in advance of two. So why would that be a reason for you to get upset?
Well, it switched though, correct? It switched from where it was going to be held and now.
That doesn't change the order of how it's being held.
I, I didn't know that at the time. I, I didn't know.
If it's held on Zoom or in person, the order of how we take the items stays the same. So why would you be upset about how, that you were towards the end of the meeting is my question.
Well, again, I'm, I'm going to say to you, looking at the meeting as it was, if, if Peter said he sent it out on May 12th and I had a chance to look at it at that point in time, and that's when it was going to be, then I had an understanding we're going to be at the end of it. I don't have a question with that. It was the amount of time that it took to get to that point. I think there was like an hour meeting of the executive session in advance. That seemed to be a little lengthy in my point. And normally when you have people that you want to have speak, you usually have the courtesy of putting them up front and you put the executive session at the end. Jackie could tell you better on that as to how that normally progresses. That's normally the way it's done. So I just thought that this thing, even though it was put that way, because we had discussed the carport twice before, we had discussed since February 15th, the discussion relative to the BBT fusion situation. And it had been put off a number of times. And so I thought it was being pushed to the back end of this again, and that's what I took exception to. It's not an exception. It's just that I was getting frustrated waiting for it to take place. Because we had talked about, if you remember, you'd asked serious questions of who else was involved in some of the, some of the issues with the, uh, the car, not the carport, but the, um, the, the, what the heck am I trying to think of?
The laser you're talking about?
Yeah, the laser. We had talked about that earlier and you'd asked me specifically, who else, what else, how much, who are the other towns? And you needed information. That's what I was happy to go get for you. That's why I was saying, great, I got the information, was looking to get that information, but, but it was still on the record as being downstream. I'm, I'm not going to argue with you on that. If that's what Peter said, he sent it and it said that, I'm agreeing with if, if that's what it said. It was indeed, my interpretation, that you were looking for those answers from the previous meeting and it was something that would be put up first. But the executive session took about an hour and somewhat minutes. And it just was a, a period of time I felt as if I wished I could have got to the answer to you folks, what you were asking me to do originally. Also, I think there was a question there about the carport and you were looking for how much it was. And then you had some questions revolving around that as well. So I was prepared for that, as I always am for meetings.
But so needless to say, you weren't surprised about the order of the meeting?
Again, I, if Peter says it was at the end of that and, and, and that's where it was, I was not surprised. I was disappointed that it was pushed to the end of the meeting as opposed to be brought up something that, as you requested originally, we couldn't give the answers to. If a request is given, I like to think that the answers should be given. I mean, if you ask me questions, I try to get you answers. I don't think there's anything that's been wrong with that.
And then my last question would be that in your letter, you were just resigning and it was accepted from the Capital Planning Committee. You still think you're capable of being on the BBT Committee?
Yes.
Why?
Why not?
You're representing a school that's teaching children.
Yep. And I think I've represented them very well, not only for the 13 towns in which I've represented that large, but I think for, in fact, the town of Millville. If you look at some of the things around this whole building, okay? I think I've represented this town pretty well with that. Okay? This, this one mistake that I have made in 32 years, I don't deem as necessary to, to deny myself an opportunity to continue to help drive the kids in this town and the opportunity in the other 12 towns to be able to have the best schooling they can. And I think the results are, are the proof.
So you don't see any, this detracting from your role at all?
No, no, I do not. I do not see that detracting. I, I think it was a mistake and I think that people who understand that people make mistakes, and I think we've all made some, when you make those mistakes and you own up to them, I think it's a learning opportunity for people. And especially for me in terms of the Zoom meeting, as you mentioned. I think it's something that kids can learn from. When you make a mistake, you know what you do? You get here and you own up to it. That's the message I'd like to give as a teaching tool, as an understanding for the kids to understand, when the guy does something in error, he needs to step up and be forward with it. And I am.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, so I was going to move on to, Jerry, anything else? So I was going to move on to, um, public forum?
Nope.
Okay. Before we do speaking, I did reach out to Town Council just to make sure that, you know, rules are followed and things like that. So I said, um, you and others, so me and others, are certainly free to speak about Mr. Finn's actions in the meeting. While you aren't required to read a statement, obviously people should be urged to keep things civil. That's the point of the discussion after all. And explain how or whether they find Mr. Finn's actions to be inappropriate as a public official and impacting the ability of town officials to work together. You can certainly say how this action made you feel, the First Amendment applies to us as well, and how damaging such actions can be at formal official proceedings, as well as his failure to apologize at this time, because I got the letter nine days later. It wasn't, I didn't have the letter. Or say he would refrain from such behavior in the future, which we have gotten apology and said they won't do this. I don't see much option for other punishment, however, because I was asking like what repercussions you could have. If the moderator chooses to, I believe she could move from Capital Planning Committee, which we did, um, in terms of BBT office. And just to let everyone know that would have to be done via a recall vote. And if we decide to request a resignation here, we can do that, but, um, Mr. Finn's not obligated to provide it. So any removal from the office would have to be through a recall. So, all right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yep.
So. Would anyone like to, does anyone have any comments? Sure.
Yeah, I have a comment.
So we don't have a timeline on public forum anymore.
I'll take a few minutes.
But we're trying, let's, let's, if everyone wants to speak, let's try to keep it to five, three, five minutes.
I just wanted to.
Please sit down, Richard.
Just talk about Jerry's explanation of if somebody were to walk in and do something that was obscene like that versus something on TV. Somebody walked in the door, three people would see it. Somebody does it on Zoom, the entire internet service would see it. Children at school, I've already seen it on Facebook. There's teachers at certain schools that are already talking about. So it's a bad example to say, somebody walks in that door and does something and classifying it as the same is something that's done on the internet. That was my comment.
Okay.
Could I make a comment back on that?
Okay, Jerry. No, no, it's okay. Just.
I think, I think I happen to agree with you. I think you, you, you're kind of making my point there. It is something that is, is not something that I'm proud of, that I wish didn't happen. Obviously, I wish it didn't. But having someone just walk into a meeting and do something like that is not, is, is not a good comparison to what took place with the internet and on the, on the way it looks. It obviously isn't because it's a much wider, broader audience. Okay? We understand that. And that's, that's why I said, I don't think it can compare to someone just walks into three people here. It, it doesn't compare. And I don't disagree with you on that. It doesn't.
Okay.
Okay? That's my only comment is like, I happen to agree with you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Alan, you're certainly more than welcome.
The leg. Okay. Well, whether you're walking in here or doing it on TV, that isn't nice. It would never be nice. But Jerry just happened to get caught. Otherwise, this would be all over. I'm sorry about that for you. But, but it is what it is, Jerry.
Yeah, I know you.
Okay? This stuff, it wasn't once, honey. It was three times.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't count.
I counted and it's on the film. And you were angry. There's something wrong with that. And we don't need to see that. We have enough problems in the world. We don't need to see that. And I think, yeah, when you say you've learned a lesson, I hope so. It may be good for other people to hear that and I'm, I'm sorry.
My reason for coming.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
I would like to just ask that no one else do that in the meeting anymore, please. Thank you.
Oh, I just did that, okay?
Three times.
A little bit.
But she has nothing to resign.
That's, no. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I know.
I was too demonstrative.[1797.12] Sorry. But it isn't nice.
No, I, I may, yeah. I, I know, I know it wasn't nice. And thank you for demonstrating what it was. It obviously is not who I am. It obviously is not something that you can look at and say, well, he does that all the time. I think you, you can attest to that. Was it an outburst that I shouldn't have done? Yeah. And I admit to it. And I'm here to say again, that I will own up to it and I will take the consequence of it. I will be removed if Jackie feels that that's necessary to do that, and I guess she has, then indeed so be it. And I apologize for that. But it's a learning opportunity for me, hopefully for the rest of the town, that that meeting is sacred when it comes down. I don't care what's behind you or what's in front, when that thing's on. And hopefully, people of my age understand that that's the case when that happens, because I do not. And it was a mistake on my part because I didn't understand it.
So as I mentioned, so moving on to, we're going to go, we were just at 4C. We're going to go back up to B. Consideration of appropriate disciplinary action. So I, again, just because that's where the bar is, I, I still would like to request, I would like to make a motion that this board requests Mr. Finn's resignation from the BBT School Committee. I think that's what's appropriate.
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor? Richard, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay. So the, everyone's okay. Richard has a lot to vote how he would like to vote. We don't always agree. I like the dynamics of the board, though. We don't always agree. I think that is good. Andrew and I don't always agree either, and I think it's good actually, because we get better, more thought provoking discussions that leads us to a better place. But in this case, so with a vote of two to one, the Board of Selectmen requests Jerry Finn's resignation from the BBT School Committee. He's not required to comply with that, but that's what this board requests. And Peter, I don't know, should we send a formal letter? I know he's here, but to make it official?
We can notify superintendent over there.
Okay. Thank you. And then I've also requested to be on the BBT School Committee on June 16th. So I'll be attending that and that will be an executive session. So. Okay. And we already did public forum. Item's not reasonably anticipated. Forty-eight hours, nothing there. And then the next meeting, it says Monday, June 13th on the agenda. This was posted. We had to move it. That's okay. So it's now Tuesday, June 14th at 7:00 PM here. So that's when the next meeting will be. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Andrew. Looking for a second?
A second.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion? Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. We adjourn at 7:53 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.